It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, November 2. Jordan, would you please give me a roll call?
Just a reminder, please respond by stating present. Councilmember Remley.
Present.
Ronane.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson. Ryan Boldt.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present.
Please stand with me for the Bledge of Allegiance.
Bledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America. In the history of our government, we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ron, is anyone signed to speak in the back there open forum? Thanks, I forgot to check that when I was coming in. First, we will approve last week's minutes for the meeting of October 26. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move, approve.
Our second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lunsman and a second from Councilman Rux. See if anyone have any changes on those minutes. Otherwise, Jordan, please give me a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion. Does carry next, we've got old business. We've got the second reading and final adoption of ordinance 2010-03 authorizing issuance and sale of bonds for tax increment financing, District Number 32, with a maximum allowable issuance of $4,333,678. Possible approval of that second reading and final adoption. Carl, you're bringing it forward here for us tonight, and oh, no, Carl, you're still Jordan. Jordan, any changes from the last week or anything that you might wish to add to this?
I have nothing to add. No changes since first reading, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronane and a second from Councilman Rux. Jordan, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Just as a reminder, we don't have any council members on, so the city attorney has said if you want to.
Johnson is actually.
Is he on now?
He joined just before the vote on minutes.
Okay, good, all right, so we did miss one. Go ahead.
May I proceed with the vote on this?
Please do, roll call.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion. Does carry next, we've got consent counter. We've got two items. We've got a malt beverage and we've got a hearing for a rezoned property. And I will take a motion to approve those two items of routine city business.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Councilman Ryan Boldt and a second from Councilman Ronane. Jordan, would you give me a roll call vote on the consent counter, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got new business. We'll move along. We've got discussion of face masks in public places, which is a possible approval of a resolution, Number 2011-02-R. Ron, is that you?
No, that is not me.
Who will be leading this off?
I'll lead this off here.
Go ahead, Joe.
This is something we brought up last week. It's come up. We'd heard some things about it. I have to admit, I've been in local government almost 20 years now, and this might be the most controversial and divisive issue I've ever had to research. It really does. It's tearing communities apart talking about it. And so I just wanted to just say a few things about what are we really trying to do? You know, we are in a pandemic, and this is a... What is a pandemic? It's a healthcare emergency. So we want to keep people healthy. We want to keep people alive. Our healthcare systems are telling us that they're concerned about their capacities and ability to continue at this rate, yet the spread is increasing daily. May bounce up and down a little bit, but it's a concern. So we just want to keep everybody healthy and alive, quite frankly. I think that's the best statement to make. We did request public comments, and boy, did we get them. About 150 worth, split about 104, a little over 104, and a little under 50 against. If you go and you monitor the media that had covered this, the social media's probably split a little bit more evenly. But we brought this resolution forth knowing that it was a culmination of a lot of discussions and a real negotiation point, really, to try and encourage the community and lead the community in the right way, but not drag them kicking and screaming. So hopefully, this is what you see in front of you, and I know some of you have some points of discussion, and that's all we have.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Ronane and the second from Councilwoman Langer. Any points of discussion to be made on this resolution?
I mean.
Councilman Ronane.
First of all, I appreciate the city manager's involvement in bringing this resolution to us. Quite frankly, I would have much rather seen us adopt an ordinance mandating mask use, and I know some of my colleagues share that, but I also know that we did not have the support to have that passed. I think this is a good compromise. It is, as I understand it, some of my colleagues oppose the idea of having to be in ordinance, some of them oppose the idea of having the force of law. Really didn't like the word mandate. And so this is an encouragement to our citizens to do what we all know we should do. We have, you know, we have... Last week, we had a positivity rate of over 40%. Today, it is over 70%. We have hospitalizations spiking. We had two deaths last week. We need to do something, and we need the city to comply with this resolution. So we are respectfully asking people to socially distance, practice good hygiene, wear a mask when you are within a few feet of other people. You can't socially distance. And I think this is what our community needs to do. And again, I appreciate the leadership from the city manager on this issue.
I'd like to say something. Councilman Remley, what have you got?
The past five months have been the most perplexing time of my life on this city council. And the last two weeks have been more perplexing. So I reached out to a friend of mine to ask him to help me make a decision because I trusted him. And he happens to be a surgeon at Massachusetts General Hospital. And he sent me a letter, and I'd like to share that with everybody right now. Dear Mark, I'm happy to repeat my personal views related to the question of a mask mandate. I do this for you as a personal friend of yours and proud native of the Aberdeen area of South Dakota. I acknowledge that I am not an infectious disease expert and recognize that the issues involved are far more than what is the safest with respect to transmission of the disease, but are in many cases driven by politics. I have, however, been a part of the COVID planning at one of the largest and most successful hospitals in the United States, the Massachusetts General Hospital, since March of 2020, and spent hours discussing the appropriate safety precautions for our staff, patients, and employees. I have personally heard the opinions of some of the leading infectious disease experts in the world, as well, of course, the messages from CDC, NIH, and other national medical organizations. As we discussed, I live in Massachusetts, one of the most blue states politically and socially in the country. We do have a very good Republican governor, however. Our state, as well as New York and New Jersey, were hit as hard as any part of the country during the first wave of the COVID-19 pandemic in March and April. Our state was in near total lockdown for most aspects of life, except for essential services, for nearly three months. The MGH at one time almost 500 hospitalized COVID patients with over half on ventilators. Our elective medical practices were shut down. Since mid-March, we have been with a statewide mask mandate with a fine association with the violation, though I'm not sure if anybody has been prosecuted. I have worn a mask essentially all day, every day since the middle of March, with the exception of when I am in my office alone, wearing one when I meet with anyone, and in my own home with my wife and immediate family. Walking the streets of Boston, there are occasional joggers and bike riders and people sitting and eating on benches during summer who are unmasked, but in general, the population has abided by these rules. The rules are rigidly enforced in businesses and certainly within our hospital. I am not going to quote the medical literature, as I am sure people can find arguments in all directions, but to my mind, social distancing, masks of any type worn appropriately, and frequent hand washing are keys to stopping the transmission of the disease. I do believe those experts who postulate that tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people worldwide could be saved by the following these very simple rules. I have found wearing a mask to be of minimal inconvenience and certainly makes me far more comfortable, even in a city which now has significantly lower rate of infection than most of the U.S. and my native state of South Dakota. In summary, I'm not a politician, and what I care most about is my own health and the health of my family, the health of the people I work with, and the population of my community, extending to all parts of the U.S., including South Dakota, and my 90-year-old father in Aberdeen, who I hope to visit soon. It's hard to believe that anyone who sets these as their top priorities cannot be supportive of mandated use of a mask until the pandemic reaches its end and or vaccination is available. Sincerely, Keith Lilimo, M.D., Surgeon-in-Chief, Chief Department of Surgery, Massachusetts General Hospital, W. Gerald Austin Professor of Surgery, Harvard Medical School. And I just got an update from Keith yesterday, and forgive me a minute. Just not a very good bit of news. My dad, 95, with COVID, is now in St. Luke's Hospital with COVID pneumonia, pretty sick, but stable. At least four residents at Town Square are positive. The disease is out of control in Aberdeen. Masks are the least you should do. Maybe shut down bars and limit indoor seating.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone else have anything to add to this discussion?
I do. I was visiting with Frosty at Circus. Actually, he visited me when I was having breakfast at Sammy's one morning. He came up and he said, "Mark, are we going to have a total shutdown again or shut down again?" I said, "Well, there's no talk of that yet." I said, "There has been talk of a mask mandate." And he says, "I can live with that." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark. Councilwoman Langer, what have you got for us?
I would just like to reiterate that I've spoken to a large amount of medical professionals, frontline workers in Aberdeen, and I have done all I can to speak with them as much as possible, and they're asking and begging of us to do something. I understand a mandate is not what the majority of the council would like, so I feel as though this resolution is a true compromise. I really appreciate the city for all your work on it, and I know that this is not typical city business, but I have yet to find, and I have asked several times, if there is a frontline worker, a nurse, or a doctor who does not feel like this is necessary, or who feels like the hospitals are not overwhelmed, for them to please tell me, because I'd love to hear it, and I have yet to find one. So our medical professionals, our healthcare workers, and our doctors are asking us to do something. This is the least we can do, in their opinion. And so I'm asking my fellow council members if we could please support them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I've got a simple point of clarification for our city's attorney, Ron. Resolution cannot be a new law.
A resolution is not a law.
And so if a resolution was presented that was written exactly like a law, we might want to address some of that language to make sure that it's clear that it's not some sort of a law that's sneaking in the side door, circumventing state laws about ordinance creation.
From a perspective of the resolution that's before you, that does not have the force of a law.
Mayor. Councilman Rife had his hand up. Sorry, Alan, we'll get to you in a moment.
Just a real quick question, Ron. On this resolution, the assistance to business, that section three at the bottom.
Yes.
I'm just curious why that would be different than any other time. I mean, does that need to be stated that if someone's trespassing, that they could be removed by the police?
It's not. What that is, is I understand, it's intended to just let the businesses know that they do have that ability to request that assistance from law enforcement, but it is just a restatement of what is out there.
Councilwoman Johnson, you got something to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add a voice of support for encouraging voluntary mask usage, but not mandating it. Addressing a comment made just a minute ago, it is far from unanimous within the medical community that masks must be used. I had a local ER doctor call me and a neighboring M.D. approach me, both who have a contrary view to what has been presented by Councilwoman Langer and patients recently with COVID. And in every case, 100% of those 30 patients, when they left the house, they always wore a mask. And this is a reminder, a takeaway, that masks are one tool in our toolbag, but they are not a panacea. What we do know is that we should have empathy and compassion for everyone affected by the virus and those who are anxious about it, but at the same time, use best practices and the knowledge we've gleaned about the virus. I personally wear masks voluntarily in stores, even when it's not required. I do that, I think, like many of us do, out of courtesy and respect for the feelings of others. And when we talk about others, I too have had quite a volume of contacts from citizens. And I would say that the opinions opposed to the mandate outnumber those in favor about seven to one. And so others may have a different experience, but realize that there are people who have a long memory and recall the effects of restrictions, and some will say, "Well, this isn't much of a restriction of what's being proposed." But it is a restriction nonetheless, and it has a ripple effect, and it has a perception. And the reality is that any sort of restricting puts handcuffs on the economy. It does have a negative effect on commerce, and we could parade hundreds of people whose jobs or businesses were affected, not by the virus itself, not by becoming sick, but by the act of government. And so we need to be very cautious and wise in what we do here tonight. I understand the emotions. I have had friends, family members, who have been sickened by the virus, and it is a frightening thing, and it's a very unfortunate thing. But I say that as a council, we should renew our commitment to sound practices, masking being one of them, but not to mandate it. Let businesses adopt specific policies. Those wishing to be in an environment with masking should definitely patronize those establishments. But I just wanted to lend support to the practice of it, but not to mandate it.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Rife had raised his hand a moment ago.
I just want to make as quick as I can statement, I guess, but I want to respond to some of the emails I've received. It's hard to respond to all of them, and especially the people up here know how many we got. I started to respond, and then I realized it's impossible. So a couple things real quick. I got the question, are you just saying by not mandating masks that people who are high risk just have to stay at home? And that's not at all what I'm saying. The way businesses have learned to operate through COVID has made it possible to go to the grocery store and get your groceries delivered to your car. You can go to the pharmacy and go through the drive-through or have your pharmacy delivered to your front door. Restaurants have curbsides pickup, drive-throughs, home delivery, and there's a number of businesses that already require you to wear a mask. I guess what I'm saying is a person can adjust their daily activities and plan out their day based on their own personal risk tolerances. I wouldn't categorize this virus as a one-size-fits-all virus. And what I mean by that is, I would guess a nursing home is going to have different safety protocols in place than, say, an elementary school. So I'm not sure a one-size-fits-all solution is the answer. As we could all attest to, this is a divisive issue. We might not agree on mandate, not mandate, but what we can say is it's divisive. And if we pass a mandate that had an enforcement mechanism, I believe it would do far more harm than good. It would pit citizen against citizen. It would pit business owner and employee versus their customers, and it would completely overwhelm the police department. I don't think this is a time to increase divisiveness. We're in an election time, and it's about as divided, I feel like, as we've probably ever been. I asked Joe to have something that he could put up. I contacted the Chamber of Commerce this morning and just asked them if we could work together on something, and can you put that up on the screen?
Yeah, Gene, I think we're ready. Gene's got that pulled up. Yeah, this was good. It sets up.
I can't see it. Anyway, you can see it. There it is. So I think this is something that bars or restaurants or businesses could post on their window or their front door to remind customers what following the CDC guidelines look like. I heard Mark say five months, but it's really been about 10 months, and I think we all have some COVID fatigue, and we're just ready for this to be over with. I think this would be a great reminder as people walk into businesses that we should wash our hands. We should use hand sanitizer. If we sneeze or cough, you should cough into your elbow. We should maintain social distancing, and yes, we should wear a mask. I think in this scenario, working together as a community, in my opinion, is a far better solution than having the, quote, heavy hand of government just force everyone to comply, because we're going to create a lot more divisiveness than we otherwise would have needed to. And is that going to mean everybody's going to wear a mask? No, it's not. As we've all...
Even if you see a sign at the store.
I would also ask that, you know, businesses would put a sign if they do require masks, because that would just get rid of the questioning as to what are you supposed to do when you go inside? I think, as we all can attest, we've been in the restaurants or bars or wherever, and most people aren't wearing a mask. So if you are high risk, my point would be to not go to those places. Use alternatives. Do the carryout. Do other things. So I support a resolution to remind people of what they ought to do. Now, whether it's this resolution, I would also like to see the other one that the mayor had put together. It's me, it's a little clearer, but we can debate about that. But I think as far as a way to move forward and to try to get community to come together versus fight, I think this is the best solution.
Are you aware of how corrupt the CDC is and how politicized it is and how many mistakes they've made?
That's...
Were you aware of that? That first lady, her friend, Fouchy, even she said that she wouldn't trust the words they said about anything.
Sir, we appreciate public comment, but we have a period at the beginning, and unfortunately, you hadn't signed up for it. Now, I know that all the council members are excited to hear what you have to say. If you catch me after the meeting, I'd be happy to share email with you, but we can't be just having...
Yeah, okay, well, the thing is, this whole mask thing is a big scam. You better... Why don't you get some alternative views? Why don't you do a little research instead of, "Oh, we gotta all wear masks. Oh, we gotta distance ourselves."
That's enough, sir. Honestly, I would like to point out that I'm certain that we've all heard from a great number of people, both for and against, and I think that everyone here has some level of respect for both sides of the issue and the people with differing opinions on this. We do need to do the right thing. I think we all want to do the right thing. We want to help the community and the healthcare system. We want to improve this system and the health of our community, all while standing up for people's personal rights. Councilman Lunsman, what have you got?
Just real briefly, I think I can reiterate, with some of you have said that I got just tons of emails. I went on social media to test that out, too. I got a lot of responses both ways. In my... And it's unscientific, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying this is scientific in any way, shape, or form. Of all the emails that I received, it was about 85, 15 for no masks. So I went on social media. Surprisingly, I was only a few points different in social media. It was 85, 15, give or take a few points, against mandating a mask. And some people were a little more stern than others, and I'm going to be kind with those words. Some were downright mean and honorary on both sides of the table. So with that said, I also went to... We were talking about Mask Up South Dakota. There's a lot of organizations to include. Avira and Sanford is part of Mask Up South Dakota. And if you read it all, which I posted on my Facebook site, on one of the paragraphs, it says, "This group is not seeking a mask mandate from government, but rather is calling on South Dakotans to help manage healthcare resources and workforce so our state's health system can help those who need to be hospitalized." So the two biggest healthcare facilities in Aberdeen and probably in South Dakota for the most part are saying specifically they are not asking for a mask mandate. And all of those that said, "Why don't we follow our healthcare leaders?", this is about as specific as you can get from our healthcare leaders, as far as I'm concerned. And therefore, on my part, I am happy to be leading the pack of saying, "Hey, these are the right things to do," but I'm not going to lead the pack of saying, "You are mandated to do these things." All we can do is encourage. These are the things that are the right things to do. And for me, that's my stand, and I just want everybody to know what that is, because if they want to get mad at me, they can direct that directly at me. But if our citizens don't know where we stand, then they can't either contact us and let us know they're unhappy with us, but I'm putting myself out there that they can come and they can email me and they can yell at me if they want to, but that's where I sit.
Just to say something about what Josh was saying about high-risk people. If you are high risk, the N95 mask will allow you to go out in public and severely reduce your risk of getting COVID-19. So just for public knowledge, N95 mask.
Most people don't know that they're high risk or not. I mean, they say it affects seniors or older people. I'm 67 years old, and is that... Am I high risk?
People, diabetes, other health issues.
Also underlying conditions, you're saying.
And if you feel like you need to, wear an N95 mask, then.
Yeah, people in their 20s, down to zero, have about a 1 in 2,000 chance of dying from this, which is pretty much lower than anything with a sharp edge. People that are, as they break it down in increments of 10 years, and you can take a look at that information, both on a statewide level and federal, it gets higher as you go up, and as the people that are 85 and above constitute a majority of people that have died in this state.
And why should we let that happen? I mean...
Nobody's letting it happen. Councilman Langer.
I just want to reiterate again, because I know everybody keeps talking about mandates. We don't have a mandate on the table right now. It is a resolution. So I just want to clear that up for anybody who's watching who is confused about what we're talking about. I don't know, Justin, you may bring a great point about N95. I don't know, Justin, you may bring a great point about N95, and one of the doctors that contacted me said maybe there's a way that we, as a city, could talk with 3M and figure out a way for people who are high-risk to have access to those, because I do know that's something that I found that's very difficult for people, especially if they're elderly, to try to figure out how they can have access to something like an N95 mask. And so, that's something that was suggested, and I thought it was a good idea, because I don't even know that, when I'm looking for an N95, if it truly isn't N95, because we all know how shopping online works, and I don't know that they're available locally. And the last thing to the stay-at-home piece, I will just say, it's a very ignorant statement to tell people to stay at home. I know for one, my husband and I are both high-risk right now, and I don't have the luxury of staying at home, and neither does he. You can't really coach a hockey team from home. So, you know, it's from personal settings, yes, we don't go out to eat together, we don't do things, but for work, you do have to leave the house a lot of times. So I just want to make that clear for the people who are out and about working, because they have to put food on their tables and they have bills to pay. I'm not saying the mandate right now, obviously, because we have a resolution on the table, but again, let's not trip over a good solution to find the perfect, so.
Ron, would you be able to put the resolution with the amendments that I had sent to you up on the screen for a moment? My biggest concern was, we appear to have taken an ordinance and changed the name on it to resolution, and in every way, shape, and form, except for the fact that it'll be unenforced, it follows the language of a, of a rule, a law, an ordinance. I think with some minor tweaks that I've sent to all of you, we can make this absolutely clear that this is the intent of a resolution, that this is the recommendation of this city council, that we can probably be unified in getting behind this and saying, you know, this is a great compromise that you continue to talk about, and I think that we can, we can encourage the city to do the right thing and to help out our healthcare systems exactly as intended. I've got, this identifies on the screen, as you can see, the changes that have been made to the one that was copied from elsewhere, and very few changes, but some of the grammar make a big difference to me.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, I don't have my computer hooked up. Joe is trying to pull that up, and we're trying to pull up the-
I thought you just didn't want to sit by me.
And secondly, I did print out for you to distribute as you see fit, that, that alternate resolution.
So yes, what's up on your screen now is the, the alternate with amendments made. Mayor, is this one, the red line version, they're the same, correct?
They're exactly the same, except the red line's been removed. There's some numbering that needed to have been addressed.
We'll start with the red line, then.
Sure.
There it is. So the red line version is up there.
And probably, so you can see in the beginning, recommending versus which have been deemed necessary. Scroll down to the next spread, if you would be so kind. So some of these whereas, and they could remain, I just didn't find them pertinent.
I mean, I do think the pertinent part about the hospitals, I mean, I don't see why we would take that out.
Talking about an advertising campaign?
I mean, it's a pretty big deal that our two major hospitals are proponents of people masking up.
Okay. Continue to scroll on so we can see the substantiative stuff. Face covering use recommended. I think that's an important line, that had previously been, "Face coverings to be worn within this city." When you read a statement like that, you can begin to understand why a person might misinterpret this as an actual rule or a law, rather than a recommendation. Every person within the city of Aberdeen is asked to strongly consider wearing a face covering. Outdoor settings. I can't imagine anyone would have a genuine justification for having someone wear masks outdoors, but we can discuss that. And these are following the reasonable exceptions, which I think tie back into the grammatic component of things. Can you go to the last page? Assistance to businesses, that's redundant with other laws. I don't think that that has any appropriate place in a resolution. I also emailed you this about, oh, Josh probably emailed you. I asked Josh, too, I was on the road today. Councilman Rux, have you got something?
Well, you know, it seems like we spend a lot of, we're spending a lot of time on something that does nothing. No offense. It's a recommendation. I mean, we're, we have a red line, we have this. I wrote on a little napkin, something that does the same thing, and it's two sentences long. It says, "The Aberdeen City Council encourages wearing a mask in public when social distancing is not possible, and also encourages following the CDC guidelines." That's basically what we're talking, because this doesn't have a rule of law. Nothing's going to be enforced. And essentially, those who wear a mask are going to wear a mask, those who don't aren't going to. So all we're doing is saying, we'd like to see this, but the status quo will still be maintained. So, you know, we spent a lot of time on this, but, and I'm going to vote yes, because I think it is good to recommend this stuff, but this changes nothing. And it may make us feel good that we're doing something, but it won't do anything. And, and I think that's the thing that, yes, we're having the discussion, and hopefully a few people do change. I wear a mask when I'm in stores. You know, I spent this last weekend in Sioux Falls, many of the stores require it, and, and you can't get away from it. But it is one of those things where we're spending a lot of time on something that, in the end, changes nothing. That's essentially what all this is. It's just a resolution, it's just a recommendation. And like you say, I'm still going to vote yes, because it is a good recommendation, but in the end, it doesn't change anything that's going on.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As an advertising and public relations major, may I suggest that it does do good.
Alan, can you, can you pause for just a moment?
To recommend, and there is a-
Your, your internet is cutting in and out, maybe if you pause for a moment and start again, so that we can be sure to get your entire message.
I'm very sorry for that. Is this better?
Yes, it seems to be.
Okay. As someone who has spent 35 years in advertising and public relations, I would like to aver that it does do a lot of good to encourage and recommend. All advertising is, in fact, an act or behave a certain way. It merely is channeling your attention to it. And so, there is value in what we've done. Our conversations, our discussions has elevated quite a bit. And I think wise people, concerned people, will modify their behavior. More people will wear a mask. The duration of that remains to be seen. I suppose numbers will affect it. Fatigue with masking will affect it, but it is useful what we're doing. And resolution or ordinance, it makes a big difference which one we pursue here as a council. The government has an appropriate time and place to do things, but a resolution that encourages feels very right to me.
And, and that's no, not saying that it doesn't make a difference, but if you're going off of what Mr. Lunsman, mine was about 70, 30, you know, 70 against a mask mandate, but, and, you know, 34, but it, it is one of those things where those same people are still going to do those same things. That 85% for Lunsman, or that 70% for me, or if another council member has a different thing. I don't look for that attitude to really change. This may make a difference in the, I mean, and, and you talk about marketing. There is no marketing campaign with this. You know, it's not like we're saying, hey, we're going to spend money to have the, give money to the chamber so they can put up the poster in every business, or, or anything like that. We're, we're not following it with any other action that may increase any chance of-
Clint, I'd like to say that it's been in the newspaper a number of times, and a successful media campaign might find itself in a distant page in the newspaper with an ad that people are actively trying to avoid, so I'd say that there's-
I'm not talking about a media campaign or anything like that, but like I say, it's been in the newspaper, but how many people really read the newspaper nowadays? You know, it, it was in the news, but, you know, how many people really watch the news nowadays? It, it's just one of those things where you, when you, when we sit here, and I'm not saying I'm for a mask mandate, I, I do think there's even issues with a mandate on whether our police officers have the time to enforce it. You know, that's always one of the things that held me back, is, you know, do you want them to catch a drunk driver, do you want them to give a ticket for a mask? But what I'm saying is, is just doing a recommendation, while it is good, it may, may help, it also may not, because there's nothing behind it.
And I would add that the Mask Up South Dakota campaign goes hand in glove with what we're proposing tonight. I think it is very nice to dovetail the two, and there's a synergy together between a resolution from the council and that campaign from our hospital and medical professionals.
Councilman Rife.
And I was getting to my endpoint here, previously, before I was interrupted, but-
Sorry.
The, the chamber, the chamber came up with, with this sign, and, and I think if you're a business owner and you want one, just simply email the chamber, and they'll send you a PDF file you can print out and you can put on your door. Is it, to Clint's point, are people going to have to follow it? Well, no, but hopefully if they read it, it'll remind them of what they should do.
Those are good reminders, I'm not debating that. And I wish every business had that in a front window or in a visible location, just as a reminder. And I wish businesses would have the hand sanitizing stations going in and the cart sanitizing stations and all that other stuff, and, and, you know, because those are good practices. But like I say, it's just, that is what I'm talking about, is, is it's good practices, and in any society, there you have those people who don't do those practices anyway.
Councilman Langer.
Last thing, Councilmember Rife, I think that it's wonderful what you do with the chamber, and I would personally be willing to print any of those for any business on my own cost, and I will hand-deliver them to you, because I would love to see businesses step up and put that in their window. So, I would be happy to do that for any business in town.
Thank you.
Just a real quick question here. Looking at the other, these two different- I must run before-
Resolution.
Resolution, thank you, I've got so many words here. Resolution, does anyone else think this is a little clearer? Does, does anyone have a, a big opinion on, on which one?
Well, you know, I, I think this, with all due respect to the mayor, this is a, this is, this waters down the resolution, which I know is what he intends and he prefers. I would rather see a strong resolution that says, "These are things we need to be doing." And I don't think any, anyone is going to be confused that this has an ordinance with, with the force of law. It is clearly a resolution. I think the city attorney did a nice job of explaining the difference between the two. We are urging people to do just what the governor has urged people to do, what the CDC has urged people to do, and I think this is a very clear resolution, and I didn't draft it, the city manager did. I think it is well done. I, I don't want to see those other items stricken.
Anyone else? All right. Jordan, would you give me a roll call vote on unamended version of Resolution 201102R?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinfeld.
Nay.
Johnson.
May I pause? Again, I'm in a hotel setting, apologies that some of the wording doesn't come through clearly. We're voting on the city manager resolution version, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
No.
Councilmember Rife. No. Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
No. The resolution does pass, and we will move right along to a hearing on a retail on-off liquor license from Ronco Foods Incorporated, DBA Jersey Sports Bar and Grill, 20, 28th Avenue Northeast, Suite 1, to Dom Incorporated, DBA Moxon Creek Casino. Can I get a motion for that transfer?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Ronain, and a second from Councilman Rux. Jordan, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinfeld?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to declare three ride-line vehicles as surplus property and allow the disposal of the vehicle's possible approval to declare those three ride-line vehicle as surplus for the disposal. Is Tom Wantey on the line? Tom, take it over.
Yes, Sam. These three vehicles are, passed their useful life and are, are being recommended to be disposed of. One of them is beyond even selling at the city surplus sale. The two of them will be used at a city surplus sale and, and try and get some income out of them. All three of them already have replacement vehicles in our barn sitting right now, so.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux, and a second from Councilman Reinfeld. Any questions for Mr. Wantey on the surplus? Jordan, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinfeld?
Aye.
Johnson? Councilmember Johnson? That was an aye.
That was an aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the airport FAA grant application to acquire snow removal equipment. Snow lower-end de-icing truck, possible approval to authorize the city manager to sign that application. Is Rich Crokel on the line?
Yep, I'm here. Yeah, this is the, the formal grant offer for those two pieces of snow removal equipment that we've been talking about for both the past three months or so. So we're, we're asking for council approval for the city manager to authorize the city manager to sign that grant offer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Remley. Any questions on that grant application, otherwise? Jordan, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinfeld?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does pass. Next, we've-
Aye.
He's ahead of one, you know. Is that for the water reclamation? We've got a pay request, number one, water reclamation, equalization basin asphalt liner repair project, possible approval of payment number one in the amount of $87,549 to Lean Transportation for work on that project. Robin?
The asphalt portion has been completed. We do have a few other accidents that we have not completed yet, and we will see come spring where we are at with those, but we're recommending approval of full payment for the asphalt work at this point. The additional work, we do not need to have the retainage to compel them to finish the little things up, so we recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux, and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Would you give me a roll call vote, then, please? Jordan?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinfeld?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of Friday, November 27, 2020, Day After Thanksgiving is a paid administrative holiday for non-union personnel. Possible approval of that administrative holiday request. Joe, what can you tell us about that extra day of vacation?
The city follows the state and the federal holiday schedule, so that's 10 a year. The day after Thanksgiving is not included in that, and what happens at both the state and federal level, and several other cities in South Dakota, but Aberdeen hadn't done, is to call it an administrative or floating holiday and allow it off, so this year, we're requesting that be allowed.
I would move to make the largest shopping day of the year a holiday.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain, complete with jokes. Oh, Councilman Lunsman.
Quick question, why non, why are we not including the union employees in this administrative holiday?
administrative holiday?
Um, and that's, that's a good question. So, when you have a union, basically, they set aside the personnel, manual negotiate their own, we just renegotiated that, as a matter of fact, next week, we'll talk about that. Um, and this, this came up afterwards, they get some things that other employees don't get, so since we're, we're, uh, basically, this is the, uh, non-union employees negotiation, and next week you'll see the, the union negotiations.
So, if they would have wanted this off, they would have needed to negotiate that during their, their, their time set aside for negotiations?
Correct.
Is that done every year, is that every other year? Remind me, please.
We're, it, it, this is interesting here, we, we do like the big agreement every couple or years, and then every year we negotiate the most important things, which are wages and, and, uh, they, they brought in some strong negotiations on wages, and, uh, and this is, uh, I, I would imagine in the next period, they'll ask for this.
Motion from Councilman Rife, and a second from Councilman Rux. Uh, any other questions that we would have on, on this one? Okay, go ahead and give me a roll call vote, then, Jordan.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of bill list for November 2nd, 2020. Somebody make a motion to pay these bills, please.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Reinbold, and a second from Councilman Rux. Any questions?
Are we doing anything different with the bills anymore? Are they all just getting filed under departments? Uh, we used to be, have certain things listed, but now we see it's bills departments in the agenda packet.
Do you have a good answer for that? We're not doing anything different, are we?
Well, I don't know if it's something different, but when you pull up the agenda, you know, you just get.
Right, so what you'll see in your packet is a listing of bills generated by our, um, accounting software. That's the big ugly report.
Yep.
And you'll find an addendum that is bill, that are bills that come in after the deadline for bills, that need payment, um, due to timing or, um, other obligations that we have that come in between the deadline for bills and the, um, council packet deadline. So, that's the way that we're presenting bills, so we can get authorization to pay before we're, uh, passed due.
I think we've got our motion. Carl, uh, you're still not Carl, Jordan.
Maybe he'll turn into Carl by the end.
He called me and Lisa about 100 times.
So, I had a motion and second.
I believe so. Wasn't that, didn't you make the motion and then make that question?
Clint's second.
Ronain and Rux.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, it was Reinbold and Rux. Didn't you make jokes? Was that the last one?
That's the last one.
So, Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Joe, once again, take it over.
Just a couple of things, uh, tomorrow's officially election day, although I think most of us have cast our vote already. Uh, the, the city, um, the, the charter amendment is on there, very lengthily written charter amendment by our city attorney, several folks have, have opinioned, uh, but it has to be canvassed, that's at 2:00 at the courthouse, at least five of you need to attend, so we just wanted to make sure that that is, uh, uh, going to occur. If you think you are, maybe just raise your hand, so that Jordan feels good about knowing.
Friday, right?
Friday at 2:00 at the courthouse.
No, they never, the county never provides lunch.
All right.
That's four.
Yeah. We'll need one more, for sure.
I can't on Friday.
Yeah.
I'd be a solid maybe, I'm, I'm just not sure.
Okay. You're gonna, Rob got arm wrestling.
I, I didn't intend to be in town.
I can, I can really try to make it, and if I can't, I'll let you know.
All right.
Yeah, maybe.
Was there a Zoom session for it, too, or had to be in person, or?
You have to be in person for this.
Okay.
Basement of the county.
Yeah, we, just to be clear, when we will need a five of you physically present, so, but we need a minimum of five people to commit to be there.
What time again?
2:00 on Friday, at the community room at the.
All right, I'll break.